Good evening. Uh, can the court call the roll?
Ms. Born?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Attorney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen?
Yes.
I'm here somewhere.
Ms. Weber.
Because we said we were going to start at seven fifteen.
Oh, yeah, we're.
We're a few minutes early.
Two minutes early.
Do you want to?
Oh.
No?
No, seven thirteen.
Oh, well.
Is he here?
Oh, yes. Do you want to give? Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Send your two-minute timer.
Yeah. Got two minutes.
I'll get that set for time.
Please do that, Jeff.
All right, so everybody's, uh, if you're, please stand if you're.
I'm here too, Amber. I am here in front of you.
Yeah.
And say, uh, join me in the plaudits. The plaudits. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, what nation of the Republic of Canada, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You got them.
Heads of council from the prior meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone has received a copy of the meeting minutes. Uh, seeing that there is no one that has any objections, I'm going to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the city council we held on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, as written and dispensed with the reading.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Attorney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Special reports. We have no special reports. Letters of communication, citizen concerns. Anyone has a concern? Seeing none, administrative reports. Uh, Mayor, um, gonna read what I've been told to read. In accordance with the Ohio Vice Code thirty-seven oh nine oh seven, I am submitting for approval of a city representative designated by the mayor to represent the city of Perryburg on the Wood County Board of Health, Wood County Health District, our designee Carolyn Rayba is retiring, and Kim Hurstfeld is the designated person that I would like to appoint to fill the term, which ends March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. This is being forth for council approval.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Attorney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Uh, only other point is to thank all the candidates for their willingness to serve both the council and the Board of Education. As always, it's, uh, takes a lot of hard work and effort to put yourself in front of the public for vote and consideration. So thank all the candidates and their support staff teams, and to thank all the voters who say bested themselves in the future of Perryburg by voting. And lastly, I think to all the elected officials who are already on council and will be on in the new term, uh, we all need to be conscious of how difficult time it is and divisive it can be. We all need to work together to make sure we're always acting to the best interest of the city of Perryburg, and I look forward to working with the new council. City administrator?
Do you want to report, Your Honor?
Finance director?
No report.
Law director?
The law director requests a very brief executive session.
I, I will make a motion to go into an executive session regarding contract negotiation. I was looking at the actual list here with us to see which one of the call under. Would that be, uh, collective bargaining matters?
No.
No?
The, uh, the one that says, um.
Confidential business information. All right, so I'll make a, so retract my first motion. I'll make a motion to move into executive session for confidential business information applicant for economic development assistance.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Attorney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Van Huisen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
So we'll just go up in the conference room over here so we don't have to go downstairs.
Yeah. That's why he's president.
Yes.
What's other reasons? You can tell it, go on.
Okay.
Good adventure, maybe it's you.
A good song, eh?
I'll have some choices. Apparently his brother's next gate or something. Maybe I'll go. Oh, that's fair.
Uh, I'll make the motion to return from executive session.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Attorney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Uh, council of president report?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have an announcement here. We have a, uh, public hearing before city council from December seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting at six twenty and another at six twenty-five. And I too would just like to echo, uh, you know, today is election day, and I would appreciate all the three members of council who are up here today during the time they could have been out campaigning to be here for the meetings. And I'd just like to wish everyone luck as well as those who are running. It's never an easy task to put yourself out there, and I really appreciate everything, and we'll hopefully see what happens tonight.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Uh, committee reports.
Finance?
Yes.
Okay.
Throw it to you, Rich.
Uh, no, no report, uh, Mayor, but, uh, I will, am going to introduce the first reading of our proposed twenty twenty-two budget. I know, um, council members have all been discussing their respective budgets in this committee. So, um, now's the time to get the first reading. So, having said that, I would like to introduce ordinance fifty-four dash twenty twenty-one. For the first reading.
Second. Do we still have to say and move through the rules to be suspended until law quarters? I think you said.
I, I want, yeah, well, no, I'm not gonna.
This is just the first reading.
This is the first reading, so I'm not gonna move that those.
We're gonna move this fast, but we still want to say we don't want to have to read through everything.
Reading by, oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry. For reading by number and title only. Second. Excuse me.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Attorney?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-four, two thousand twenty-one. Making appropriations for current expenditures and other expenditures of the city of Perryburg, Wood County, Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and declaring an emergency.
And, uh, Mayor, next meeting? It's gonna be the, uh?
Tonight.
Tonight.
I do actually have a question just for the administration to report back regarding the budget with the additional security we have up front. I'm curious to see how much it's actually costing, um, for the budget, uh, for the council meetings as well as the committee meetings.
And I would also add that if anybody has any questions, we've done this in the past, uh, please make sure you get them to the administration so they can either go to the committee or so that we're, talk to all, everything through. So when it comes for passage, if they're reading, all the issues are already out there, and we can have a meaningful discussion on anything that's still around.
Thank you. Uh, safety committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The safety committee met on October twenty-sixth and was called to order at six P.M. Committee members present were Mark Weber, Barry Van Huisen, and Deborah Born. Also present was Bridget Cabot, Sandretto, Amber Rathburn, and, um, Patrick Jones, and Christopher Sargent, our new lieutenant. The minutes were approved with Ms. Born voting present. The A R A S R contract, Ms. Cabot explained that this is a five-year agreement with Northwood, Perryburg Township, Lake Township, and Rossford. We will be reimbursed for four-fifths of this annually with, over the life of the contract as a contract holder and lead entity. Mr. Weber asked if anyone, if everyone is happy with the services received so far. Ms. Cabot stated that they have not had any blackouts or dropped calls since inception of the program. Ms. Born asked if we, if we have a warranty in use for this. Ms. Cabot answered that they are looking to replace some pieces over the next two years, and it will be, bring the warranty back to renewal phase. The committee agreed three-zero to recommend entering into this contract. The twenty twenty-two budget, Chief Jones introduced Lieutenant Sergeant, excuse me, Lieutenant Christopher Sargent, and then walked the committee through the details of the twenty twenty-two budget. Chief Jones explained that they are running out of room as they are growing and will be looking to put in the amended budget money to finish the second floor, which will be approximately one point four million. In twenty twenty-two, the police department is looking to hire three additional patrol officers. Ms. Born stated that she is really glad they are hiring additional officers and thinks that it is needed. Mr. Weber asked if it is, ask if it is four officers minimum on patrol per shift, which Chief Jones said is, that is correct, but that he's looking to make the minimum five or six depending on the shift. I did note that the consolidation of line items makes it harder to understand. Mr. Weber asked, uh, the, the budget, Mr. Weber asked Chief Jones if he would like to publicly address the chatter about an animal control officer. Chief Jones explained that animal control, according to our ordinance, is different than nuisance wildlife control. Officers actually handled seventy percent of the dog-related calls because the calls would come in after the animal control officer's normal hours or on weekends. Ms. Born asked if it was taking a lot of time away from the chief and his officers. Loose dog calls average out to less than one every other day. So he cannot justify the need of a full-time animal control officer. Ms. Born thinks it would be more advisable to have the A C O position filled. Chief Jones stated that the crossing guards will receive a dollar increase per hour in January, making thirteen sixty-five per hour. He stated that Rossford's crossing guards are actually school employees rather than city employees like Perryburg. Committee members discussed crossing guards with Chief Jones, and that if it is a busy intersection, he will make sure someone is there. I ask if they will be purchasing forty-four new tasers, which is, was a part of the budget, and if there is any resale value to the old ones. Chief Jones stated, stated it is potentially, there is potentially some resale value, although very small. Mr. Weber asked about auctions. Ms. Rathburn said they will begin using a new company, and that she hopes to get higher bids this way. Ms. Born asked if we could have an officer at the council meetings, and Chief Jones answered that it is something we could look into or talk about. I asked if there was anything not in the budget that they needed. The Chief Jones said that everything is there, and they were well taken care of besides the second floor, which will be in the amended budget. Ms. Cabot stated that Chief was, will be at the next committee meeting to discuss, and then she gives, and then she gave the committee a general overview of the fire department's budget. Mr. Weber asked about code red. Ms. Cabot explained that it is a service that the city currently uses for weather alerts. It can also be used for, to alert citizens of certain things such as a water main breaks or a high-speed chase. Ms. Cabot stated that the replacement engine costing nine hundred thousand dollars will go back into the amended budget. Golf carts. Chief Jones said that with golf carts, it will be difficult to enforce from a safety standpoint. Golf carts cannot go, cannot go more than twenty miles per hour. This means they are at a disadvantage already on the road that is the twenty-five miles per hour. People's speed are backing up and may not see the golf cart as the semi-trucks, as well as semi-trucks being on those roads. Ms. Born agreed that it is a safety issue. I said that it was brought to the committee, um, and needed to go to, do its due diligence, and that he appreciates Ms. Sandretto's and Chief Jones's diligence. Mr. Weber agreed that it is not the right choice in his time. I suggested that we keep the information on file because this matter probably will not go away. Ms. Born wanted to address the parks having issues with bathrooms and vandalism. Chief Jones said that they were able to identify the individuals who were responsible for some of the vandalism, that they are looking to put some camera systems in place in some of the parks in various locations throughout the city. Chief Jones said that in the meantime, they will also be putting more patrol in the parks. Ms. Born asked also mention the issue of alcohol in the parks. Chief Jones said that someone, that, that sometimes it is an issue because alcohol can be concealed in a tumbler. Ms. Sandretto clarified that alcohol can be allowed in the parks if there is a permit and it is approved. The alcohol must be enforced, fenced in area or with clearly defined borders. The art sculpture event and discussion did go through the process and had a permit. And that concludes the minutes for the October twenty-sixth meeting. I do have a resolution. I would like to introduce Resolution sixty, twenty twenty-one, move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number, by number and title only, and to dispense with the second, third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Attorney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution sixty, two thousand twenty-one. A resolution authorizing a five-year agreement with Motorola Solutions, Inc., and an amount not to exceed one hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars for maintenance support and S U O A two services and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution sixty twenty-one depasses as an emergency measure.
Second.
Roll.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Attorney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
We don't need that. It's all good.
Our next scheduled meeting is November twenty-third at six P.M.
Uh, committee?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Um, I do not have an official report because we, this month yet. Uh, we will be meeting November ninth at six thirty P.M. Uh, we did have a crack meeting last night that we, that went on for quite a while, but it was pretty productive, I think, for all the members. Um, and they did bring up some things that they wanted me to mention to city council tonight, so I'm bringing them up again since I've mentioned them before. One was about the McKinley Woods area and about what we would be doing about that. Will we be looking at that? Will we be making that into an area? Will we be making that into a park? That was brought up by them. That's, I'm just sharing what they said. Um, they also said they wanted no electric hookup at, um, the park over here, Woodlands Park, because of the light pollution. They, they voted on all these. These are all brought to me to bring to you from before. The crosswalks, and they wanted to have an update on that, and I was, since Barry just spoke, I was gonna interject, but I thought I'd mention it now. Um, they wanted to know if we could have an update and have that come to the safety committee about the crosswalks between, um, Rotary Park and River Cross Park. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, plane zoning?
No report, Your Honor. We meet on November tenth, three at five thirty P.M.
Yes. All right. So I do have a report for you. Uh, the meeting took place on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Present for himself, uh, committee members Mark Weber, Tim McCarthy, uh, and some members from the administration. Uh, we approved the minutes. Uh, then we reviewed proposed changes for various sections of three sixty-six, and we've straightened the code. Uh, it was our job to take, uh, those proposed revisions and study those for the next meeting, send questions to the administration. Uh, then we reviewed the twenty twenty-two budget. Um, Ms. Jeff came to review the proposed twenty twenty budget for resources office, noting that all those salaries had been combined into one, uh, line item, and then there was an additional position of seventy-five thousand dollars for, uh, a safety and health coordinator. Uh, I asked for some additional information for a side-by-side comparison. Uh, Mr. Weber asked about seeing what each person makes, uh, as well as any fluctuations in salary. Uh, I also requested that we review those changes and pay and review all personnel pay ranges each year during a certain period of time. Um, the, uh, Ms. Cabot said she would pass that along to the mayor. Uh, Ms. Cabot wanted to make the committee aware that they were looking for a public information officer to go part-time to full-time. I asked if that could be a salary position instead of hourly. Um, administration explained that job duties qualify to be an hourly position plus overtime if necessary. Ms. Cabot stated that Chief Jones and Mayor Mackin are looking into three additional officers for next year's budget, adding one officer to each shift. Uh, she also stated that Public Utilities is looking for three additional operators. Uh, the only other new position being requested is public service to Adnaberus. And then we discussed the law director and prosecutor positions, potential amendments to the sections of review, uh, of the charter concerning those positions. Uh, I stated that the idea behind this is to have a law director be independent, um, and have them only answer the mayor and city council. Uh, I would also like to see the prosecutor put on the level of department head where they are responsible to the city administrator, uh, to the mayor and city council. Mr. McCarthy stated that having the prosecutor, uh, report to the city administrator is fine with him. Uh, I also thought the law director should not have to worry about the direction, uh, the city administrator is moving things when it comes to legal analysis of things. Committee members all agreed to have legislation drawn up to the next committee, uh, meeting in November. Uh, there was no further business, so we adjourned. Next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November twenty-third at five P.M. Uh, and I have no legislation tonight, so that's my report.
Sure which one is next? Public utility. Now, finally get to move helping, so.
I know.
Which I appreciate it.
The meeting was called to order at six thirty-six P.M. on October twenty-seventh by Chairperson Jonathan Smith, committee member President were Jane Attorney Jonathan Smith and Barry Van Huisen, also President were Bridget Cabot, city administrator Amber Rathburn, finance director Kate Sandretto, law director Nellis Gossi, director of public utilities. Uh, so was Matt Shoma, who was the, uh, also the deputy director of public utilities. Uh, citizen concerns, uh, Paul Smithers of, of Locust Street stated that he and his neighbors are all concerned about the amount of water in their yards. He said that the tree streets are needing access to drainage and that their plants and trees are submerged in water so long that they are becoming damaged or need replaced. Mr. Smith and Ms. Gossi discussed the Grassley Creek Storms Water Master Plan that was created by Hazen and Sawyer with Mr. Smithers, and they will be emailing him a copy of it. Um, which I, Kate, I think you have his email. I tried to send an email and it bounced back. I don't know if he has any other communication. So that's just something we could talk a little bit afterwards, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Gossi said that there are priority projects in place over a number of years regarding C S Os and S S Os, and mentioned that the city hosts marine barrel workshops. Water and sewer rate study draft report, uh, Mr. Michael Maker of the Executive Consultant with New Gen Strategies and Solutions presented over Zoom, the updated water and sewer rate draft, uh, study report. He highlighted the changes from his last presentation in the public utilities meeting. The purchase of water from Toledo is actually based on the contract rate increases, the recommendation is to adopt the recommended charges and rates for the planning period of twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six, and to review the rates and charges on annual basis. A study like this only, is only necessary every four to five years. Uh, Mr. Smith asked if the initial presentation did not include the Toledo rate increase, which Mr. Maker confirmed is true, and that this number is more accurate. Mr. Smith asked about reducing the minimum charge for usage and how would it change the figures. Mr. Maker explained that this would mean less guaranteed revenue. Mr. Van Huisen asked what has caused the spike in revenue for the sewer shortage. Uh, Mr. Maker explained that there will be a one-point-five-million-dollar surplus, which will be used for future years when there is a slight deficit. And awarded the bid of the, uh, one-point-five M G elevated water tower painting. Ms. Sandretto explained that we need our state Route one ninety-nine elevated tower tank painted. Uh, the nine bids received all came well under the estimates, and ultimately Seven Brothers Painting, Inc. was the lowest invest bid. Ms. or, Ms. Attorney, sorry, asked if this is for maintenance reasons and not for decorative reasons, was Ms. Sandretto confirmed is true, prevent new water crisis in Perryburg. If the committee members were curious if the aesthetic piece is included, and it is, it is, although it's not yet been determined. Uh, Ms. Sandretto also noted that this was the first use of their new well-pronged bid system, and that it went well, and they are very pleased with it. The committee has no objections, but would, but wants to have a say in the aesthetic part of the water tower. The committee agreed three-zero to recommend this to council. Sewer credit stipulation, there was no issues except for just a couple of small things. Uh, we then moved on to the budget. Uh, Ms. Gossi walked the public utility committee members through the twenty twenty-two department budget. Mr. Smith asked about the Fort Meeks Road ditch work as well as the multi-use path. Ms. Cabot said that there will be a scope meeting on November first, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Smith also brought up multiple grant opportunities and wanted to know if we are applying for those. Ms. Cabot said those grants will slow down, will slow down the process, but the grants could be used for connection pieces from sudden place. The committee members agreed that the grant could be used to continue the multi-use path after sudden, and suggested looking at that while this project is being worked through. Ms. Cabot noted that public utilities requesting four new position totals, uh, three operator field employees, and one supervisor overseeing everything out in the field. Mr. Smith asked about the replacement of the water valves. Ms. Gossi explained that those water valves mostly in intersection where water lines cross because it, if there is a water main break, the area of concern needs to be isolated in order to reduce the total number of customers active. Mr. Van Huisen asked if there is a timeline we are being given. Ms. Gossi said that it is a five-year period, which we are already into. So we'll be asking for some forbearance at the next inspection. Mr. Smith asked if the committee could see a job description for the four new positions. Um, Mr. Smith asked about the reroute for the sanitary sewers and if it will help with some of the C S Os and, uh, S S Os. Ms. Gossi said that if it is an issue on the south side of Grassley Creek and is not causing backups. Mr. Smith asked if there is anything not in the budget that they would like to see in there. Ms. Gossi responded they were not denied any request and that they do appreciate the replacement vehicles, but there is not anything on their wish list per se. Ms. Attorney asked about the water tower and if there is contingency funds in place. Ms. Gossi said that yes, there is ten percent, uh, spelled out in the resolution. Mr. Van Huisen asked if there is anything being held off for the amended budget in their department, and Ms. Cabot stated that nothing is being held off unless the twenty twenty-one product carries over and is not hard to place before. Another business, uh, Mr. Smith asked about a wastewater treatment plant's capacity. Ms. Gossi said there is, there is a growth ability for new homes and/or development. There was some discussion between Ms. Gossi, Ms. Cabot, and the committee members regarding some overflow. The meeting turned at eight, seventeen P.M., and our next scheduled meeting is Monday, November twenty-ninth at six thirty P.M., so that is a change from our normal meeting. With that being said, I do have one piece of legislation, and I would like to introduce Resolution sixty-one, twenty twenty-one, and move suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Attorney?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Resolution 612021, a resolution awarding a bid in agreement with Seven Brothers Painting Inc. not to exceed $438,725 for the state Route 199 elevated water tank.
Mr. Mayor, you have quite a discussion.
Let me move it real quick, so I move that Resolution 6121, you pass.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read this through, and obviously I don't have any problem with it, however, the language that is written in Section 1 states the city council authorizes the award of the bid for the state Route 199 elevated water tank painting project with Seven Brothers Painting Inc. And the mayor and director of finance are authorized to execute the agreement with Seven Brothers Painting Inc. for the state Route 199 elevated waiver tank painting project in an amount not to exceed $438,025, as outlined in the quote attached hereto and incorporated herein as an exhibit date. And specifically, it says, the mayor and director of finance are further authorized to approve all change orders considered necessary for this project in the amount and not to succeed 10% of the agreement for an additional amount of $43,872.50. I have issue with that because I think that takes the power away from Perrysburg City Council. We are the ones that vote on allocating money. I don't think that should be left up to the mayor. No offense, Mayor, but that's where I feel.
I have the same question, but it's not about that because we've had previous discussions that we're trying to get away from a system where we're coming back to council, we're anticipating that, I understand, the change order. What's the process of getting that answer set on this one? Because I didn't see that outlined in the report.
I know, I have to prove to Ms. Gossi, the help we're using, we need 10% approaches 8% or so. I haven't looked at the bag, we do this job, complexities of the job. It was the recommendation from our new city attorney, I'm telling you that was the appropriate number for this, based on the size of the contract and the complexities and the potential for needing change orders.
That's pretty, that's not.
I know it's not, I just wanted to get in the head of the percentage, but do you see that part?
I already spoke with the city, with the end here, and we were considering it, it was confirmed by Ms. Gossi, the head of Public Utilities.
We could try and make sure in future construction projects, we explain that. But to answer your question, that's exactly what you're authorizing. You're authorizing the expenditure of the money and, if needed only, change orders, which would come back to council if there is a specific amount that would be explained.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I read this correctly, it says basically you and the director of finance.
You're authorizing us to.
Be authorizing, I didn't say that I was doing that. I was questioning why that's there.
That's pretty much standard, but okay.
The other point of this, I just want to echo, and this was in the report, that this does not include the artistic component that potentially could be reviewed later. I appreciate the committee talking about that and bringing that up.
We're painting it.
Yeah.
And we're going to put a logo on there, and that's it.
So I guess with that question, maybe with the aesthetic piece, that's something that we should have on here that gives authorization from council.
I would feel more comfortable with that.
That's, I'll let you answer that, but that's not.
I was just going to state, as part of their base bid, this firm has an allocation in there for the painting of the water tower.
Right. So what is painted is an administrative function. It could still be a council function. Council could.
I will say this, I totally disagree with a logo being slapped on there. I think it's a complete missed opportunity if we're spending the time to paint it. This is right next to 75, a highly traveled road. It's an opportunity to make people remember Perrysburg without driving by. It's a chance to make a statement in a 10-second window as people are driving by, and I think it's huge oversight to just put a logo up there, like a lot of the other cities are doing. I would be inclined to vote against this ordinance if we're authorizing the painting of a logo on there, and we're not exploring, we have artists in the community, we have other things that I think should be considered.
Do we have a time, do we have a time limit?
We're reviewing that, and so that would, I would vote against this if that's what I'm authorizing. Because in the report, it seemed like the committee wanted further approval to review potential artistic ads. So that's why I want to know, I want to.
When you're talking about logo, you're talking about the city of Perrysburg logo.
Yeah, the city of Perrysburg, the new branding.
It has to be better than what's on it now, come on.
And I don't want to settle for that. I'm not knocking our new logo, I think we're missing an opportunity to be something a little different with potentially a logo on there, but I mean, that's a.
It could get lost in all that other stuff.
I don't even know what that other stuff is.
Well, I'm just hypothetically, if you go and decorate and put some flowers on it and stuff, you could potentially lose, it should be statement, not.
Well, if council wants to spend, well, I'll let you answer a variety of questions, and then we'll tell the administration's view, and if council wants to vote no and risk the issues with back compliance, back yourself down.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, the water tower, the contract allows for the water tower to be taken out of service on April 15th for a, I believe, 45-day period, during which all the painting has to be done, all the interior, the exterior, and then put back in service. This contract would give the contractor notice that they are getting this job, and if there is any artwork other than a standard logo, a standard type of aesthetic element to this, that's going to take more time, and if we cannot be in the position to delay them taking the tank out of service on April 15th, because that will hurt us. We want, temperatures have to be high enough to do this work, but we want the project done and put back in service before the high demand, high water demand period begins.
And I would add, what is currently on there is not good. So we're replacing, that's not fair. It was appropriate at the time. We have a time constraint. We want to put the new logo up if we want, as some people have suggested, to maybe make it more like the silos downtown. That's going to cost money, somebody, we need to go to our council, we need to raise money, we need to do those kind of things. I'm not sure that that's, we have the time to do that, and I don't, and I guess I would also say.
So why don't we have the time to do that?
Because we have to get it done within a.
No, I know, but that's a timeline that's completely foreseeable, and it's also something that's completely foreseeable that people may want to see art on a water tower. So I'm sorry, I'm just not accepting the fact that, hey, we backed ourselves.
Let me finish, we didn't back ourselves into the corner. We, what you're saying is, we want to put something up on there that is more expensive than the current proposal, because we know that it probably is going to be other than kind of a basic cost to do that. That's council's prerogative to do, and if council wants to do that, that's fine, but I think that that puts into risk the timing of getting this done. And from my perspective, that wasn't a core function of tax dollars. I don't, I understand your point that it has, should be, have some appeal, and I think a new, our new logo, our new branding will do that, but people are not, from studies we've looked at, and we did look, basically said that, you know, people Google, they don't look at the water tower other than an instant, and they're not looking at it for the purposes of why it was done and painted in the 1990s. If council wants to vote against it, that's council's prerogative. I'm not comfortable spending more tax dollars on that. So there needs to be then, council needs to raise money to address, because I don't think that's the best use, and we need to make sure we do it in a way that's timely, given the maintenance requirements from what we're being told, so.
Can I ask, Ms. Gossi, can you pass me a question, please, just real quick? If the grain elevators can be painted with grain in them, why can't this water tower have that artwork done after there's water in it? I mean, after it's back in use? I don't, what reason would there be that we can't finish the artwork or logo or whatever we decide after it's back in service?
Yes. And Mr. President, Councilman Weber, there's the issue of condensation with the water inside the tank. That condensation makes it more difficult to paint the exterior.
So I knew you'd have an answer.
When, I imagine when the contractor bid on this, he put weather days in, because you mentioned temperature, but also moisture has a tremendous, the humidity in the air can impact it, and this contract came under bid, under bid was really low, and us voting no, we have the potential of when it goes back out to bid because it was so early in the season, it being twice the amount of what we're paying now.
So what I will just point out a couple of things is, we talked about the cost of it, we had budgeted about $800,000 for this project. So there's definitely wiggle room when it comes to that on trying to do something on there. I will also make mention that we have talked numerous occasions that there was an appetite to look at what was going to go up there artistically, and now it's, as the administration has backed into a corner on this is what we're going to do regardless. I know that there was, it was specifically asked of me, I gave some suggestions, it said, no, we're going this way. Regardless, the appetite that council wanted to do something a little more, in my personal opinion, was overlooked throughout this process, without different options.
I would disagree with that, and I would also say, again, this goes to how you view tax dollars. The fact that we're substantially under budget, and given the supply chain issues, that we would substantially run the risk of substantially spending more money, just because we have it budgeted, my experience as a taxpayer is, that's not to be, let's go to the edge. Let's, that's a, let me finish, it is a reasonable expectation of cost. If we can do it, our administration has zealously tried to save taxpayers' dollars, and done it in a way that will lead to a good product. If we, if it costs substantially more than this, I don't think that that's what the taxpayers would view as the best use of their tax dollars. But that's council's prerogative, and I would disagree that we didn't, we did consider other options.
Have we done any public outreach to support that conclusion?
Appreciate that, so. Yeah, we have talked to various, kind of what the cost of various art would be, and.
No, I'm talking about our citizens.
It's a maintenance, we haven't put it out to.
Well, it is a maintenance until it's not.
Well, we have not, the answer to that is no.
Because I can tell that there's going to be a lot of citizens that are going to be upset that there is this change coming.
So I guess this leads.
You're going to get it either way.
This leads to my next question. How, the shutdown period, because I, I'm going to present, I never want to sacrifice health and safety, I understand deadlines, and in getting, it doesn't sound like there's going to be an aesthetic portion other than potentially a logo issue. I'm willing to accept that, I think it's probably appropriate at this point, it's great that it comes in under what we budgeted for. So is this a realistic thing that we can shut down the water? So say we go on to make a decision, next year we budget for an aesthetic component, is it, can we have an expectation that we won't completely disrupt if we shut down two years in a row, or a couple of years down the line? What's the logistics of that, if you don't mind, Alice?
Mr. President, Councilman Coleman, there probably is a way to do that, however, taking it down again is disruptive to service, disruptive to residents, and applying a different artistic element later, we could not use Public Utilities water fund revenue.
And I understand the budgeting, there's ways to get that budgeted for. I'm more curious about the disruption to service. Can you elaborate on that? Because you're going to know much more about how that works, how big of a deal it is to get this painted in the first place, I'm just trying to understand that.
I think it would depend on the time of the year you're talking about, because obviously during the winter months, the weather is not conducive to paint it here, and so that's why the project is starting in April. If you go past that time and start getting into the heavy watering season, where people are watering their lawns constantly, that could be a service disruption throughout the course of the summer. When it comes to the fall and temperatures, I'm not certainly an expert on paint application onto a large metal object that contains water on the inside. I don't know if you have the same condensation issue fall to late, early winter or not.
And I'm mainly talking about doing this a separate year during the same time period because it sounds like that's, we're choosing the time period strategically.
Strategically based on, based on whatever.
So what kind of disruptions can we expect with this shut off?
Well, I can't give a good answer because I've never had experience of painting just a logo. It's always been the entire tank, either new construction or.
Can you take me, can you take me through that? What we can expect with the proposal in front of us, which doesn't include any aesthetic thing? It maybe includes a logo, from what I understand.
Yes.
Can you take me through the disruption that we might experience?
Okay. The contractor will do site preparation and as much as they can before the tank is taken out of service, and that April 15th date is best estimate of when temperatures would be conducive to starting a painting project. Then they will, the water will be drained out, they will do the interior work, there is some corrosion, some rust that needs to be addressed on the inside, because it hasn't been taken down in over 10 years. So the interior work will be done, and any interior coatings applied, and then there's a waiting period for that until that cures. Then the exterior will be sandblasted where necessary, and corrosion issues addressed, and then painted on the outside.
And I should have maybe made this more, when we shut down that water tower, what does our consumer experience, our water consumer? Like what disruption there?
Well, we will need to do public information ahead of time to let them know that, well, we're working on a plan, we're, our hope is that there will not be disruption to the residents, but they will not be able to water their, water their grass during this period because we don't want to put that much demand on the system. And that's why they're on, the contractors on a time element to get that tank done and get it back in service before the watering season.
So the goal is no cognizable difference to the consumer, other than, hey, please don't water your grass while this is going?
Right, yes, yeah.
So it's potential that it would be very limited disruption in the future if we decided to budget for an art.
That's what we hope for, that's what we hope for.
Obviously, we can't know for sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Regarding what you were saying about art, it made me think about Commodore Perry. Why can't we just put Commodore Perry on the water tower?
Well, I think my point is, it's a larger discussion that hasn't happened, unfortunately, and maybe we can have that in the future. That, those answers make me more comfortable that potentially we can budget for an artistic component down the line, with limited disruption.
Happy to look into that, if it's a proper expenditure, a proper action by council to do that in the amended budget for future, next year and after this year, for the coming day.
Yeah, I think, and the first step is outreach to our citizens to see if that's actually a want. I'm not going to sit up here and pretend I've talked to a bunch of people, I know that, to me, that's my position, I've talked to a couple of people about the water tower, but those close to you tend to share your opinions when it comes to that stuff, so public outreach might be insightful there.
One of the things I'll just point out is, this is a generational change in what you put up there. It's something that's going to last 20 to 30 years. It's something that. I disagree, I mean, we just said that we can talk about it in two years, or a year or two.
We can, but I mean, once you're doing it right now, it's going to be that much harder to make that change in the future. And we're at a point where we're almost, we've pretty much crossed that line, that it's going to be more costly to do it later than it is to do it now. We have the workers already there, it's going to be more cost effective to try to do this now. And I understand your point about people using Google, but a lot of people use Google, the goal is to get people to use Google to look for your name, to search for Perrysburg, not just to say, this is the area. I mean, it's typical marketing for any business, if you ask anybody in that agency, they're going to want you to look up your specific name first, than just looking for, what's a place in Toledo area that I can go see? They, we want to look at for, what can we get people to want to come here?
And that's why, in my opinion, if the CVB wants to spend money towards the kind of, this is a convention and bureau issue, not a taxpayer dollar, I prefer, it'd be my expectation, I would rather have tax dollars spent at core business functions, police, fire, roads, water sanitation, parks, those kind of things. If the CVB believes that it is, that this is a good way to attract attention in business, that is a proper use of CVB funds. That's my, that's my take on priorities of tax dollars. We've been charged, and we saw, you look at, you look at social media, social media is clear that they don't, they don't want tax dollars wasted, they want to save tax dollars, and here is an effort by this administration to really not go to. an effort by this administration to really not go to the extent we can budget it. I would commend Alice and her team, we got a good price. We did it early before the things happen, and now we're saying we want to turn it off. That's my perspective on that. I don't think it's sound fiscal policy or good business practice.
Well, I'm going to disagree with the comment one more time that this was something that surprised because this has been made mention at numerous committee meetings that council would like to have some say in the aesthetic and then to say at the last second that this is something that we're moving forward with.
Well, there's also, there is an issue of council's, is it, you know, is this, this is an administrative function. I will just leave...
And you're asking for council's approval, which is where we come in.
Right, right. But council's approval for expenditure of tax dollars...
No, and I understand that, but you also can save tax dollars and people's money by budgeting for joint projects. So, it would have been great to talk to CVB to see if they're interested in using our paint. Those conversations didn't happen. That's what I'm trying to...
Well, the CVB...
And there may be a desire to have something other than Perrysburg logo on there, which is the same exact design that a lot of cities have. This is a huge paint job. I'm just saying I would have liked to explore the idea.
What's wrong with that? Why, what's wrong with, what's wrong with that? You talk about identity and promoting businesses and stuff. We don't want our message to get lost in the graphics, which is potential of what you're talking about, instead of seeing that and saying Perrysburg. You're going to lose the message in the, and to me, sometimes when it comes to advertising and marketing your brand, the simpler is the best way to go. That's all I know.
Two questions, Alice?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. How critical are we to have to get this tank redone this year? Is it, can it be put off a year?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, no. No. It's already overdue. It's already overdue for an inspection. Well, it's been inspected. It's already overdue for having the inspection report found deficiencies, those deficiencies have to be addressed.
Okay, all right. Second question. If we were to want to do the artwork at another date, would there be any reduction in cost by them not doing the logo now?
I respectfully, I would not recommend putting up a blank, having a blank. I would not recommend that.
Until we decide, I mean, unless, if, you know, a decision hasn't been made yet exactly what to go with there, I was just wondering if it, you know, we told them, "Well, don't do the logo just yet. We'll get back up there."
Typically, the non-performance of a contract line item would be a ego, that may feel credit to the city that forgot to perform.
We could do that.
It's a good one.
Okay.
And then you potentially face it being three times as much next year or the year after.
So, this conversation reminds me, were you finished, Mark?
Oh, yes, yeah. I just was trying to get some more information on that.
This conversation reminds me a little bit about what we did or didn't do at the Divergent Diamond. We looked at that as more than just a generational signature, and we found the money. We went in combination with the county, and because that's a permanent structure, and I'm talking about the signs, the exit signs. We, the city council deemed it to be important to put that kind of signature on our only gateway. So, this water tower, often you will say, well, you live in Perrysburg, or I'm from Perrysburg, they'll say, "I know where that is." And you know why they know where, why the travelers know where it is? Because what they see on the water tower, they see the word Perrysburg, regardless of the other stuff that might or might not be on there. It sounds as though we have some artwork, because it sounds like we determined that it was too expensive. So, I would like to see that artwork.
Well, we just...
Well, I heard that there were, it was deemed to be too expensive. So, we don't know what those numbers are, right?
We didn't, we didn't get an estimate for...
Okay, I misunderstood.
We were just, well, bringing it to the city of Perrysburg, then the state of Ohio.
The word, the words...
Yeah, and the state of Ohio with a P.
Okay. And that may end up being appropriate, but I'm struggling with the timeline being April. Here we are in November. If that's the artwork we choose, it's already done. Then it's a question of what is it going to cost? So, I'm not sure, you know, we have to do this. I wish we had an opportunity to put a signature that's representing this community on that water tower. It was just a personal wish of mine for a while. So, can we get a bid to see if the CVB can afford it, to see if we can contribute to it, and then take the, I understand that not wanting to waste taxpayer money. I appreciate that approach. I really do. Sometimes if we can partner, it would diminish the cost of that a little bit. This is, this is a 30-year stamp on our community. So, I would like to see the artwork, and I think we have a lot of it already designed with what the city's done, but what would the cost of that be? That's all.
Yeah, I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, artwork, meaning that if it's this city of Perrysburg or...
It's a brand.
Yeah, put the brand on it.
We can show that to you.
I'm sorry?
We can show that to you.
Well, but there's a cost function, so we know what that, if that's what we choose.
That's what we're doing. That's what, that's what this is.
When you say logo, I think of just the figure.
The city of Perrysburg, then with the state of Ohio with a P, like all the letterhead and all that.
I can't, I can't see it, so I'm sure it might get me forwarded to you. I don't see it.
Top of the stationery.
Yeah.
The letterhead.
Getting back to what we were talking about earlier, we mentioned artwork. If you're going to talk about something that people think of Perrysburg as, they think of Commodore Perry. So, why can't we put at least a head and shoulders up there?
Well, I think this is, to summarize what's going on, I think it kind of showcases there should have been a bigger conversation, how much dialogue you had just tonight on different design ideas and things like that. I think personally, we're missing an opportunity. I'm going to vote for this because it's needed, and I hope we explore the option of adding potential artwork in the future and hopefully it doesn't cost us more because of a missed conversation.
And I pretty much echo Corey's. Maybe make sure you're your name right today. It's, you know, we talk about, would it be more? We don't know at this point if it would have cost more to do something a little different. To throw out that it could cost more, it would depend on what we're looking at and how much time and energy it would take to put that on there versus just the word Perrysburg with, and I'm looking at our letterhead, and I don't think it's what I'm looking at on the letterhead. Hopefully, you can share this with everyone exactly what the administration is talking about, but these are definitely, would have been an important conversation, and I think that with the conversation we're having here, it's not just coming from us, it happened. There's going to be some elements of the community that will share similar sentiments to what we're saying on what they would like to see up there. It would have been nice to have some different options to know for certain what that could be. And I would like to see us move forward with some identity, some options, if there's a way to make a change before this April and it fits within the budget. I think that's important to look at here over the next couple of months. If at all possible, to come up with a couple of ideas over a couple of months, bring back to see if it, if it would fit within that replacement cost. After that, I still think it's important, if we don't move forward, just to continue to explore that over the next year or two, to see if there makes sense to make any additions. That's really where my thought is. I don't want us to end at this conversation tonight. Sometimes it tends to happen, and I would like to see, see if there's any additional options that can come before us before, we got, what, five months until that happens?
It changes the scope of the contract. It could cost us significantly more.
We don't know until we ask.
You're right. Absolutely right. And I have no trouble with the way it is now. I have no trouble with the logo. I happen to like the logo. I just, don't be surprised if it will be more because of the supply chain and they'll make a change order, and contractors love change.
And I think the point is that it wouldn't be more if we had some opportunity to look at this and explore this.
It will be, because you're changing the scope of the contract.
No, what I'm saying is, if we had the opportunity to discuss this before we're at this point, or had some suggestions on this, it wouldn't be at that point. It just boils down to communication at that point, but...
I guess I'm understanding, if I'm summarizing this correctly, Mr. Smith, you're indicating something separate from the contract. Am I right on this when you're talking about that?
If there's a way to look and make a change order on it?
That's the way I understood it.
Happy to look at the cost of, I don't know what...
Specifically, like the line item and potentially bringing in...
But you know...
Alternative.
We have something before council. I'm very hesitant, well, council can do what it would like, but I think it would be a disservice to the residents to lose this process.
I think it was a disservice to the residents that we didn't have the conversation.
Well, you've made that perfectly clear. I think we have had various conversations, you and I, and I think that there's some disagreement as to what the purpose of that is and the goal of that. And I think if you were to ask all seven people on council and the mayor what their view of what it should be up there, but at a certain point, it's a simple cost issue. If we want to go to the CVB, wants the CVB hire somebody and to investigate how could it potentially bring in business or what's the best ways to advertise the city, I think that is a use of CVB funds that would be effective. So, I mean, we disagree. So, any other discussions?
Just a question. If you came up with alternative artwork, it might better suit the administration and council. Could that be accomplished through a change order to the current contract?
I would say no, because somebody's going to have to create their artwork at one year of contract.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to create it.
Somebody would have to be hired to do that.
You're right. We've got about a four-month lead time.
So, you'd have to do RFPs, RFP, one or the other, to select an artist, call for an artist, whatever the case may be.
And then...
Create a contract. Have them produce a selection of options, center on the selection of options, various methods of obtaining feedback on that, but it is not a whole process.
Is that something that can be accomplished in four months?
It's possible if you ask the council. You could not use, you could not use water pumps to do that.
All right. And typically, when you do this type of change order, it'll be time, materials, and if you go through the room. And then if that is done and artwork is produced, then we would take that back to the contractor and have them tell us that that's within the scope of their allocation. Typically, it won't be because it was, its words were a very, with a one-dimensional picture versus artwork that may be multicolored and was more complicated design, then they would give us a price on that. We would then have to come back to council.
I'm ready to vote. I will end it with, I am very pleased with the price, so thank you for the hard work on obtaining that price. That's well below budget. I don't want to lose the focus of that. This is a good use of taxpayer money. Currently, I have different opinions about what should potentially be on there, discussion around that, so, thank you.
Any motion?
Our roll call, sorry.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
No, I cannot do that because of the additional 10% that should be council's decision.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
End of my report.
No, that's possible. I'm all right.
All right.
Yeah, man, you're... All right. Meeting was called to order at 5:35 by Chair, President, and Attorney, Committee Members President was Jan Matroni, Jonathan Smith, and Cory Coleman, who are a little late. Also present were Bridget Kebbit, City Administrator Kate Sandrata, Law Director Amber Rafford, Finance Directors. No citizens concerned, the minister approved from the 23rd. Fall street subdivision contract tree planting. We're looking to plant 211 trees, some of them being paid by planners, a new development for Branch Nursery Nursery. On the bid for this project, Mr. Smith asked about an arborist position. Administration stated that employees are internally have all the qualifications to handle this, and in fact, Public Service is looking to create an arborist position. Mr. Smith asked if the trees would be going down 25 along the multi-use path. Ms. Kebbit explained that they designed the multi-use path, they will be able to understand the space a lot in the run away, right away, if there's enough room for trees. The committee agreed 3 to 0 to send this to council. 2022 budget, Ms. Kebbit walked through the 2023 budget. Repairs and maintenance lines includes River Crest Park, restrooms at River Crest Municipal Park, grave metals pond erosion, and running a water line in-house. Mr. Smith brought up the kayak launch and wants it in regardless of whether or not there's grant money for it, which Ms. Kebbit noted. Mr. Coleman asked about the inspector, which is explaining actual city electrician and building maintenance technician. Mr. Smith asked if when purchasing office supplies, et cetera, they go by local producer in America. Ms. Kebbit stated that there's no requirement in codified ordinance or policies. Ms. Matroni mentioned the fuel cost affecting the service committee in many ways, the operation equipment, the materials used on the road. Ms. Kebbit stated the budget amendment process, and we can evaluate and allocate more money if needed. Mr. Coleman asked about the safety training line item would be absorbed if we hire a safety coordinator. Ms. Kebbit confirmed it is true. Mr. Coleman asked about maintenance and if they receive specific training in electrical vehicles being added to the fleet. Ms. Kebbit said, "Yes, if they do, and they get annual training." Mr. Coleman, it was brought to his attention, the city's public fill stations are much slower than others, and to look, and asked to look into it, and something the city should consider should they get electric vehicles in their own station. Mr. Smith wants to make sure the cars we purchase are beneficial to American workers and are looking at that. Mr. Smith asked about crosswalk indicators and if they are in the budget. Ms. Kebbit stated they will be in the amended budget. Ms. Matroni asked if there's a regular scheduled control device replacement that happens automatically. Ms. Kebbit said Rob Ross is budgeting two years, two each for the next several years. Ms. Matroni stated a big idea to have solar panels, we back your battery backup, so if electricity go out, there would be battery backup for the lights to run, traffic lights to run on. Mr. Coleman asked if there's a breakdown on what gets recycled. The committee members all agree it would be good quarterly updates on effectiveness of recycling program. Other business, Mr. Coleman asked for the update on Closure Indiana Avenue. Ms. Kebbit said that the contractor is still looking to replace the subcontractor. Mr. Coleman asked if there's a way to sign up for emails regarding traffic updates. Ms. Kebbit stated that is something we have at the, not have at the moment, and that she'll bring it up with IT, engineering, and a new PIO when we hire one. There to be no further business, we know it's 6:31.
I was going to ask real quick about the meeting dates. I know that we...
I'm sorry, what?
The meeting date.
Yeah.
For service committee, since that's the day before Thanksgiving.
Wednesday?
Yeah.
I will need a different, I will not be able to...
Yeah, because I'm not going to be able to tell you. I thought we moved it before yours, no?
If we didn't, I'm okay with moving it to the 29th.
Okay, yeah, that's...
And actually, Personnel Committee, I'll probably request a change date on that.
I know we talked about it, but...
I thought we talked about it too, and I saw that on there, so I wanted to raise your attention.
Yeah. Okay. With that, I have three resolutions for ordinances, resolutions, that's what I have. Bring it for council.
Separate the resolutions from the ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm going to separate them all.
Okay.
Or...
You want to...
Yeah, let's read the resolution and two ordinances together if there's no...
That sounds sound.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
I would like to introduce a resolution 62-2021, a move that the rules be suspended a lot for its reading by number and title only if the dispense with the second, third reasons.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Oh.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
I move that resolution 62-2021 be passed as an order to the...
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
You've got to read it. Resolution 62...
No, I'm bit.
62-2021, a resolution authorizing an agreement with North Branch Nursery Inc. not to exceed $82,754 for the 2021 fall tree planting and declaring an... not to exceed $82,754 for the 2021 fall tree planting and declaring an emergency.
Roll call?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, did she move for it?
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Okay, all right, I just, all right, yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni? Yes.
It's like we're all new up here today.
Okay, I would like to do the introduce resolutions, ordinance 50, I'm sorry. I would like to introduce ordinance 55-2021 and ordinance 56-2021 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second, third, or eighth.
Second. Roll call?
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 55-2021, accepting streets, alleys and green spaces per certified ordinance 1295.07 for Summerfield Plat 3, declaring an emergency. Ordinance 56-2021, accepting streets, alleys and green space per certified ordinance 1295.07 for Coventry Point Plat 2, and declaring an emergency.
I move that ordinance is 56-2021 and 55-2021 be passed as an emergency.
Second. Discussion?
Just one quick question that I just have for you. I brought this up in the public utilities. I want to clarify, because this was a question I think all of us received on council. With these new plaits that are going in with the CSOs and the SSOs. I'm asking you, Alice, yeah, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I was writing a email.
No, sorry, for these plaits in these locations, these areas are not going to be, have an issue with contributing to the CSOs and the SSOs to the wastewater treatment plant. They have a clean, clear access to the wastewater treatment plants. For the, I see Bridget shaking her head.
I think it's on the west side of town.
Yeah.
Short answer, yes.
The short answer, yes, they will not be contributing towards that, just for clarification.
And another clarification I'd like to make is the service committee has talked at nauseam, actually, no, that's a joke on my part, about the signals for pedestrians and we are acting on putting them in various locations. Jonathan Smith has a list.
I did talk. Note for the discussion, roll call?
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
That's all I have. Next meeting is November 29th?
29th, 5:30 PM.
5:30 PM.
Any other business come for council?
I just wish everyone luck tonight.
Everyone good luck, everybody. No other business, your motion to adjourn, hearing no objection.
She said the 29th.
Yeah, 29th and 5:30.
Very positive.